Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our August 6 Webster Central School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Would you please stand and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I part with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and individual with liberty and justice for all.
Board members, you've had a chance to examine the agenda for tonight. Are there any alterations or additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may we please have a motion to accept the agenda?
So, second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries and the agenda stands as written. We do provide an opportunity for members of the public who have registered with the board clerk to address the board at this time. We ask that the comments be brief, no longer than five minutes, and that they be related to school matters. If you have a personnel matter, whether directly or indirectly, it will not be discussed in public, and if you do have a personnel concern, it can be addressed in writing to the board. And with that being said, is there anyone in the audience tonight that wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on. We have a new Director of Fine Arts. Karen, would you like to make the introductions?
Thank you, Mike. I am proud this evening to recommend Mr. Michael Roller as our new Director of Fine Arts. Mr. Roller, if you can come on up, and Dr. Seibert, if you don't mind coming up as well, that'd be great. So, as many of us know, Dr. Seibert is retiring in a few weeks, I think September 1st, correct?
That's right.
And over the last few months, we have gone through an extensive search process, and we were very lucky and, again, very honored to be able to identify Mr. Michael Roller as our new Director of Fine Arts. And even luckier still, Mr. Roller certainly knows Webster's culture. He has been here for approximately a decade, ten years. Started at Schrader High School for two years, and then for the last eight or nine has been one of the choral directors and general music teachers and chorus teachers at Willink Middle School. And my daughter was lucky enough to have Mr. Roller a few years ago, and I know what an amazing professional he has been and what an amazing asset he's been to our district. So, Mr. Roller has been transitioning with Dr. Seibert over the last few weeks, and the transitioning gets a little bit more intense over the next three weeks before Dr. Seibert bids us all adieu. And, Mr. Roller, we are very pleased to have you join us, join our team up at District Office, and if you'd like to say any words or if you'd like to reflect, that'd be fantastic.
Thanks. I'm really excited to be part of the team, and there's so many people that have supported me and influenced me over the years that I'm going to get to work with in a new capacity, and that's exciting. The best part about it is the support that already exists for the arts in Webster, and I know that sustaining the programs that we have here is going to be one of the drivers to what I get to do with our wonderful staff that we have here in the district, and then always searching for the new opportunities that we can give our students to experience and learn more about themselves through the arts. So, that's the part that I'm really going to get excited about. So, I thank you for the opportunity.
So, before the board acts on the recommendation to have you appointed as our new Fine Arts Director, I'd like you to perhaps introduce your family, because you brought the brood here tonight.
I did. My wife Kelly, and our oldest Cora, and Benjamin, and Evelyn, and Aubrey. So, I have my cheering section at a lot of different things.
It's fantastic. So, well, we promise not to keep you so busy that you get out of balance. Remember, it's always about family first, but you also know that when it's concert season, and I'm sure your wife Kelly is used to that, because as a music teacher, you know what it's like during those concert seasons. But, again, Michael, we are so happy to have you join us. And Johanna, we have been incredibly blessed to have your leadership over the last ten years, and we can't wait to, and we know that Michael was probably one of your first hires, I would imagine, or shortly thereafter, so you have been his mentor, I'm sure, for his entire career here in Webster, so we couldn't think of a better selection. So, congratulations, and Board, I think this needs action.
Yes, we do. And welcome, Michael, and thank you, Johanna.
All right, Board, may we please have a motion to accept the appointment of Mike Roller as Director of Fine Arts? Oh, that's right.
That's okay, you have a quorum.
Yeah, we have a quorum.
Yeah, you have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
You can pretend.
Right.
You can pretend.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome, Michael.
Welcome. Thanks for coming out tonight, Michael. Thank you, Kelly.
All right, Karen, Superintendent report?
Okay. Thanks, Mike. This is a very exciting time of the year, because although it's still summer, there are so many of our Webster teachers, staff, and students that have been working hard to gear up for the new school year, which begins on Wednesday, September 2nd. That's in twenty-seven days. It's the very first time we've ever started school with kids, with students, before Labor Day. So, many of our teachers meet throughout the summer to spend time on professional development and preparing for new courses and curriculum, and our schools are filled with summer camps, enthusiastic kids, and although I still can't wait for all eleven of our schools to be filled with the energy that comes from the voices and enthusiasm of our students, I know that if you were to talk to many of our students, they think that summer is still too short and that twenty-seven days isn't nearly enough. But I know from the parent's point of view, twenty-seven days is probably twenty-six days too long, so we can't wait for September 1st. A good example of summer camps is our marching band camp, which has been going on this week and will also be going on next week, and you see some pictures of our band members in action right here. Under the direction of Steve House, our students are learning new music and choreography in preparation for what promises to be an outstanding year for the pride of Webster. They are also preparing to host a bottle and can drive and an electronics recycling event that is always a big fundraiser for the band this Saturday, August 8th. So, stop by Webster-Schrader High School anytime from 9:00 to 5:00, and they'd be happy to take those items off of your hands. Or you can also call the marching band hotline, (234) 8684. You see the number in the bottom right corner of your screen, and if you call that number, you can schedule a pickup, and it's a great way to support our marching band, The Pride of Webster. While I'm on the subject of our students, I want to congratulate one particular student who has spent his summer getting a taste of what college may be like. Marcelo Luciano. Marcelo was accepted into Carnegie Mellon University's National High School Game Academy. Marcelo, who will be a senior at Webster-Schrader High School this year, was one of sixty students from across the country that was accepted, and he got to explore a curriculum that they are interested in and pursuing in college. In this case, Marcelo was introduced to video game programming, 2D and 3D art design, audio production, and even game psychology. He and a team of other students spent a portion of the six-week program rebuilding a video game from my generation, Donkey Kong. Congratulations, Marcel, on your very productive and educational summer, and Marcelo's is just a snapshot of the many educational experiences our students participate in during the summer vacations. Lastly, please look for your community back-to-school newsletter, which should arrive in all of our homes in probably the next week to ten days. This newsletter is filled with helpful information about the school year, so be sure to look for it in your mailbox. To our newest Webster Schools family, if your students are just beginning with our district, please make sure that you've registered them for their 15-16 school year, and for more information regarding the registration process, please visit the district's website, websterschools.org, and click on the central registration quick link on the left-hand side of the page. Also, keep checking in to the district's website, along with Facebook and Twitter, for all of our important school updates, and you can follow us on Twitter at Webster Schools Proud, and you can also follow me at Super Webster. I cannot wait to get started with teachers on Tuesday, August, or Tuesday, September 1st, and with students on Wednesday, September 2nd. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Karen.
Back in June, Board Member Paul Benz, because of his work situation, resigned from the Webster Board of Education. After taking applications for this position, the Board of Education, according to educational law, 1709, has selected Linda Diogarty to fill this vacant seat until the term expires in June of 2016. At this time, we need a motion to appoint Linda to the vacant seat. May we have a motion, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So, Linda, I would like now to give you the oath of office. You do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of member of the Webster Board of Education according to the best of your ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now you get to vote on things.
And the first one up is going to be taxes. Well, with the board, we do need to finalize the tax rate, and the tax rates are based on the final tax rolls that are certified by the district, namely Brian. And would you like to add some details to that point, Brian?
Sure. The first thing that you have there is a comparison to what we were projecting on our May 7 budget hearing. We came in a little under the valuation increase. We projected about a 1.5% increase in May. When the rolls were certified, we were at 1.3, so two-tenths of a percent off, and that equated to a little bit of a higher overall rate increase. The other area I wanted to specifically point out for the district members living in the town of Ontario, they had an equalization rate shift from 100% to 97%. The assessor relayed to me that this is going to be a one-year change until they do a townwide reassessment. The state came in and mandated they drop the equalization rate, so that kind of skewed their rate increase compared to everybody else because of that. Makes their share of Wayne County in our district a lot larger, hence the one-year blip with their rate increase going up significantly higher than the other towns. Any questions on that that I could clarify? That's usually a difficult, the equalization rate changing and how it could swing tax rates.
We have how many families in Ontario? There's not that many.
There's not that many. I only, from an overall perspective, it's about $1.6 million in assessed value, so it gets heightened even more because of the size in comparison to everybody else.
Seeing no questions, then we'll need a motion to accept the tax rates. Thank you. A second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So, just a quick clarification. Our taxpayers will be reimbursed for any change in the tax, in the actual tax?
That's an excellent point, yes.
That they're paying?
No matter what the increase was, minus a couple other factors, if you've put in a new pool or something, the state's not going to reimburse your assessed value for going up for that, but anything over last year, if you stayed with a stable baseline, you will get that refunded to you.
If I remember correctly, from last year, it came, the check came end of September, early October?
Sometime in the fall.
Okay.
It could be, depending on where you are, it could be as late as the first week of November.
And just to remind all of our stakeholders, the reason why we qualify for rebate of any tax increases is because our budget was below our tax cap.
Does it have to be the school and the town?
No, it's each taxing entity.
Each taxing entity?
Yep. So, because we were below the tax cap, our taxpayers will receive the school tax increase. If there's, when they see an increase, they'll receive that back sometime in late September to mid-October.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Now, let's move on to the reserve transfers. Brian, would you please explain that?
Sure. This is in correlation with adopting the warrant, you also have to complete all your reserve transfers, and in June, I had given you some estimated transfers of what we could be doing with undesigned funds balance. Unfortunately, now that we've closed our books and audited this week, there are no funds to transfer, so we are going to be right below our 4% in the 386-39 area when we finish off the year. We've had some significant increases in some expenditure areas this year where our fund balance has stepped in and taken the hit for that. And also, our revenues on the state side with timing of BOSI's aid didn't come as we had hoped it would have and would have planned for due to delays in ordering, so that shorted us on the revenue side a little bit. So, those two things coupled together left us right under the 4%. So, there will be no transfers. I just wanted to clarify that change. I initially thought at the end of June, we'd have some funds, but once June finalized and we took a look at it in more detail, I'm recommending that there are no transfers this year.
That makes it easy. Since there's no transfers, there's no motion.
Anything to vote on?
So, we will, however, ask you to give our report for, is it May or June?
June.
June.
So, we have, this week is our audit. We're officially closing the books on 14-15. That has gone very, very well. They were scheduled for five days. They're only going to be here for three because everything is in order. Not a lot of questions. They're just doing their due diligence, going through everything. So, we should have a very quick turnaround on a draft report for the audit committee coming up in the beginning of September. With that said, June is always our low cash flow month. State aid does come in, but a lot of our June is deferred. Our BOSI's aid actual payment for 14-15 doesn't show up until actually August of 15-16. So, we're running a little behind on the revenues because most of them have come through, and our expenditures really tick up in June. A lot of that has to do with payroll, end-of-the-year payouts, so those increased. So, even though we're still in a fine cash flow position, you will notice on your month-to-month comparisons, this is our lowest level that you've seen in our bank accounts, and that is really the reason why, because of the payroll payouts in June. Secondly, just want to point out, we are, I could happily report, we will have a small surplus in our school lunch fund this year, right around $8,000-9,000 that will turn out in the black. So, big kudos to Mark and his staff for the work they've done to turn around some of the negatives we've had over the past couple of years.
That's good news.
That is. It is great news.
All right. Any questions from the board? May we please have a motion to accept the treasuries for June?
Second.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. As required by New York State Educational Law, the Board of Education must review and approve the Webster Central School District Code of Conduct each year. This Code of Conduct clarifies the standards for behavior that is expected for all members of the school community in order to preserve a safe and supportive learning environment. So, Shelley, anything to tell us about on the Code of Conduct?
For this school year, we are not making any recommendations for any revisions. The past two years, we have made revisions that would support our Dignity for All Students Act, and this year, as we have, we continually, we meet monthly with all of our DASSA coordinators and for our care team, support staff, and we review our behavior data, we align that and talk about our Code of Conduct, and right now, we are feeling that it's meeting and serving the needs for the district. With that said, there is some new legislation coming on board to support transgender students, and so that is something we're going to be looking at. We need to review the Code of Conduct to make sure that it is aligning and supporting all of the regulations.
So, next year, we might see some changes.
And maybe even possibly this year, we may want to revise it.
Yeah, we can do it any time.
Correct. Correct. Right.
But I acknowledge that circumstance within the district, and you do have language in there that is protecting of that.
We currently do, yes.
It's just, it may be embellished, is what you're thinking.
Correct. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions or comments from the board on the Code of Conduct?
I'll make a motion. Well, we don't have to make a motion, because we're not changing anything.
Well, we do have to.
We have to accept that. Oh, okay. We have to readapt it. Okay.
So, the motion is there. A second, please. Thank you, Linda. All in favor of adopting the Code of Conduct?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. May I also stay up, Shelley, because we're going to talk about Medicaid. In trying to be in compliance with the federal and state laws relating to the Medicaid billing for school supportive health services and other programs, we were looking at a document that ensures the procedures are in place to properly document and accurately bill the services that are rendered. I believe that's how I read the whole thing. So, anything else to add to that?
There is not. Again, we are not recommending any changes to the Medicaid compliance plan. The program is designed to ensure that we are properly documenting and billing for Medicaid services or Medicaid payment. We did have a desk audit this year, and as the previous year, we had a state audit, and we did very well, and this year, again, we did very well. And that really is, and I said it last year, it's thanks to Kim Ganley and her oversight because she truly understands all of the nuances of the billing aspects around Medicaid because it primarily focuses on speech and language, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services.
Okay, even though there's no change, we still have to adopt, so may we have a motion, please, to accept the Medicaid compliance program?
No.
Second, Ann?
Yes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
Now, the Board of Education's desire is to have an innovative, dynamic, and diverse learning environment, inspiring all students to attain a strong academic foundation, to model positive character skills, and to fill their individual potential by acquiring the essential skills to be ready for success as a learner, as a worker, and as a citizen. We want our schools to be guided by clear goals, which will allow them to stay focused on what we believe to be essential. So, Board members, you have the draft of the district goals. We'd like to approve them tonight. Are there any questions or comments or additions to those goals?
I just wanted to comment to the point that the work we did during our workshop in the summer and some of the work done by specific board members to help reward things, Ann and Mike Deedy, appreciate your help on those.
All right. May we have a motion, please, to accept or adopt the 2015-2016 Board of Education District Goals?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Tom, I believe you'll be going to the NISBA Convention in October through the New York State School Boards Association.
That's correct.
And Ann, I believe you are also interested.
Yes.
I know, Sue, you probably aren't.
No.
You probably aren't. All right, then it's easy. Then you'll make the arrangements. Okay, that takes care of that. I sent out recently an idea of elementary board liaison assignments. If it's okay with you, Ann, I would like to stay at Clem South, and that would put you at state, okay? And then the rest would be the same time you'll be going to Duett, and you're at Schlegel and Plink South, okay? Then we're all set with that? Do we, I don't think, we don't need a motion for that, do we? No. We're just, that's what we'll be doing. Okay. You also had the opportunity, Board, to take a look at the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of our meetings, the personnel actions that the district is taking, the recommendations on the Committee on Special Education, as well as the recommendation of the Committee on Preschool Special Education. We also have a universal pre-kindergarten program approval, and lastly, we have a bid for bagels.
That's a good one to open.
I know. Of course, we never get a bagel to test to see which one we like better.
Actually, we did.
Did it? It's been a?
Actually, we did.
Oh, yes, we, yeah, 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 yeah. We found out which ones we didn't like.
We didn't like.
All right. May we please have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
A second, please. Thank you, Linda. All in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I do want to point out that we do have a summer retreat next Wednesday. It'll be upstairs, 8 o'clock in the morning. Our next regular scheduled meeting isn't until September 10th, although it is, let's see, you said 27, so it's 35 days away.
Yes. It's half a week's away.
Yeah.
Mr. President, appoint a personal privilege, please.
Yes.
Thank you. It's my honor as an officer of New York State School Boards, representing all of the districts in the state, to present an award to one of our board members. Education is important for all of us. It's a lifelong journey, and one of our members, our president, Mr. Suffolletto, has achieved from the Leadership University of New York State School Boards Association, the Lifetime Achievement Award for his ongoing education in a combination of attendance at many workshops, webinars, legal events, participating in legal, some of our legal events. So, the board, the School Board Association, would like to give you this plaque and this And if I may, take a moment. NISBA, School Board Association, Leadership University, board lifetime achievement to Michael Suffolletto, Webster School Board, in participation in New York State School Boards Leadership Development Opportunities totaling over 500 points. This year, 2015, Timothy Kramer and Lynn Lenhart. Michael, it's my honor to congratulate you.
All right. 500 points, Linda, here you come. They don't come easily.
No.
All right.
Lot of effort there, Mike. Thanks.
Thank you very much for that. I guess that takes, oh, okay.
I just wanted to mention, because we've all become so fond of Lorenzo's liaison reports, and I don't know how many of you happen to see Missy Rosenberg's column today, but he is part of a band called Main Street Lights that includes all Webster, either grads or students, and they actually are having a release party for a CD at Water Street Girl on Friday, and it sounds like a great CD, and Lorenzo is on piano, and we've also heard the primary vocalist, Lucia Rose, I believe is her name. She is just amazing. So, but because it's at Water Street Girl, you do have to be 16, but it's at Friday night at 7 o'clock. So, anyone out there that is a fan of some of the talent of the music groups might want to stop in, or at the very least, get their CD, and their CD is called Manifest Destiny.
I wonder if he has that song, he did a graduation on it.
I don't know.
Oh, okay, that'd be good. Okay, anything else for the good of the order?
What's the, I'm sorry, what's the name of the band again?
Main Street Lights.
And that, if you just Googled that, you could?
Actually, you could, if you look at Missy's column in the DNC today or her blog, you can read all about it.
Okay.
Great. All right. Then may we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Some.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
I just need signatures for the affidavit. I just need signatures for the affidavit.